On the nose. I'm weird like that. If I could ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Absence of Mr. Herman, I will take your call, Mr. Larry Rappich.
Here.
Rosetti?
Here.
Neil? President, Mr. McBride?
Present.
Gentlemen, if I could have you review the minutes from our last February 27th meeting. Were there any questions, comments, corrections, missed spellings? Look pretty good, Mr. Chairman.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for February 27th meeting.
Seconded.
No offense, but I heard him. Political with you people. Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Mr. Neil?
Aye.
Rosetti?
Aye.
Mr. Rappich?
Aye.
Alright, our first agenda item this evening is a motion to approve the concept plan of subdivision to the Harrow?
The Harrow?
Yeah. Right, property generally located on the southeast corner of the intersection of Big Timber Road and US Highway 20. Mr. Ray?
Sure, so this is the first step in our multi-step process we have tonight with us, Gonzalo Tina Harrow and some of his associates representing him on the engineering front. Basically, they want to annex zone and subdivide in the village. You can see on the concept plan he prepared there that he's seeking M2 zoning to put his contractor company on the backside of that property and then he's going to subdivide it and some of the furniture parcels as some kind of business zoning yet to be determined. So tonight is just that concept stage. It's very informal at this point. No engineering's really been done or submitted to the village at least. No special reports from any government agencies, just the concept stage. So be appropriate tonight after hearing what they have to say, ask questions, give your feedback and then make a recommendation or a motion to approve or not, and then this will be presented to the village board. Mr. Tina Harrows, anything you'd like to say about your project?
Um, I mean, I can just go over what.
Sure.
So like he said in the beginning, just want to keep building under the back, taking about three and a half acres from that Big Timber parcel and then everything else will be subdivided for, you know, businesses, anything that can be done. Uh, I would have an access point from 20 as well as from Big Timber. My work is about eight to 10 trucks leaving in the morning before seven and they come back after four o'clock. That's basically my traffic. It's nothing that I in and out all day, but we just load up what we need to get going and then come back at the end of the day and do the same. But any other questions? I mean, it's pretty much it.
Is that, is that what you're doing now on the property?
No, the property is vacant right now. They actually just submitted to demolish the house up in the front. It's a slab on gray that got built, I don't know how many years ago, but we just submitted to demolish that property.
And the, and the other, the other house, the brick house?
The other house is ours. That's part of that, uh, the family, uh, Wesley, I believe is the owner, the ones that, that remain of that house.
That's not part of this property?
That's not part, yes, the house, uh, the driveway is an easement from the property, but when it was an estate from the mom and they were offered to buy either, the other kids and nobody wanted to buy it, so we actually got it from the estate. So.
And what were you looking to do on it? You said with the trucks and that?
So I, I have a concrete company, but I work concrete, I pour driveways, foundations, all that. So it's just for us to put our equipment on the property. So if you see that it's about 21,000 square feet. I mean, most of the stuff will be put inside the building.
Wait, this would be along the back property line, not up against the roads?
Yeah, it'd be in the back. So.
Oh, parcel two, correct, on this map it shows.
Can I see that?
Please.
Up right here, yeah, it's a little bigger.
I can put it on the screen too.
Yeah, the back end. You'll see this icon here, yeah, this is the property.
So I'm trying to get my maps correct. So this one, oh, this is US 20, it's labeled.
So, yeah, I think technically it is.
That's where the bump around, yeah.
Sir, we interrupted you, you sound like you're.
No, that's, uh, let's say, I didn't realize it was back there.
So that would be lot one, would be where the.
That's correct.
Property or the, uh, storage.
That is correct.
Parking.
Yep.
And then two and three would be for future development, subdividing?
That is correct.
Are you looking for M2?
Yeah, for that particular area where I'm putting, for that parcel.
So the whole property wouldn't be zoned the same?
No, if you look at, again, I'll just.
At least do.
Yeah, uh, lot one.
Yes.
Is what we're proposing for the.
I see.
Zoning, and then lots two and three as a variance of zoning, it's on a highway commercial to B3 or B4. This is such a large parcel for just commercial that whole stretch, we wanted just to build in a little bit of flexibility for whoever would eventually develop it.
Understood.
I mean, I used to work as a prime office in Huntley forever and then I actually dated a girl when the high school went back there. So, I mean, this is, this is the next big street, 47, we're ready, Randall, next big one is 47, so 15 years from now is, this is all going to be booming. When you already got Pinky Grove stepping on your toes over here.
Yeah, would M, would, would another zoning option work and still scratch the edge of the, the building and the storage of the concrete?
I'm not too familiar with that aspect. I mean, I would have to.
Yeah, Mr. Rappich, staff, staff actually advised them to, because that is what would be required for the contract.
Okay, I got you. Thank you.
I'm curious, what, uh, what percentage of your truck traffic do you think would be leaving on Big Timber versus 20?
I will probably say 15, 15, 15, depends, because our 47 is a street we take a lot, you know, 47 and we got 90. So we work Plainfield, work North Aurora, we work in Libertyville, Aitkenshire, so, I mean, sometimes they go that way. Hard, very, very seldom we jump on Big Timber to take 90 from the truck stop. We always take it from 47.
Obviously, this is concept plan, so nothing's really been discussed with K dot or I dot as far as any of like the right in, right out, turn lanes, anything of that sort. And the only reason I bring it up is you have that house immediately south of your westerly entrance.
We have not had any conversations yet. We were really waiting for.
Okay.
Uh, tonight's meeting, make sure that we're on the right track and then the village board, just to confirm before we get too far.
There, there's also being, I don't know if you have it up there, but there's something about I, I dot spending that in the near future. We thought it was going to happen last year, but it didn't. So, I mean, it's probably already, I dot is planning to open this right here and taking some furnished out of Big Timber already that, that I know and we got the paperwork on that.
That's such a fun curve.
Any more questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you.
In case, then I will entertain a motion to approve a concept plan of subdivision for the Tina Harrow property, generally located on the southeast corner of the intersection of Big Timber and US 20. I'll make your motion. Seconded. Mr. Rappich?
Are we not discussing?
Oh, apologies.
Well, I don't have any questions for the owner or the applicants, but.
Okay. Questions, comments, discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually have no problem with what he wants to do with the property. The trouble is, we're up against the same problem we had two weeks ago. This is M2 directly abutting residential areas.
Well, understanding based on the actual flat is we only have approximately 20 feet.
Right, just, we can have a thousand homes going right in, right in. And there are homes in this picture, right?
Yes, there is an existing property.
So again, it's, while the language of M2 and M3 is vague, near, well, it's not exactly what the word is, but it's near or approximately or remote with the word remote. So that's my only concern, not the actual usage. I think that's a perfectly great usage. Uh, but, uh, like I say, that zoning strikes me as problematic, given what's all around it.
That's all. Josh, do you know how close the film properties are going to come to this parcel?
So the existing portion of the Oakstead development that is not quite a decent, a tatty corner for that parcel is just this property. So everything that's going to be built there is going to be further away as it will be wrapped around the school on that east and south side of the school. So there won't be any, any homes any closer to this, any new homes being built closer to this. It's, it's just really the school side. Uh, but again, it's not, you know, there's not a, Mr. Rock stated, there's not, you know, 100 feet that, butts either side. Certainly, you could, uh, if you, if you chose, you can add conditions to your motions. Also, you could, if you'd like, entertain a condition of some sort of screening as they consider their engineering plans or something like that, if you're up to you.
It's a little bit of a different animal too, because I don't think these folks. I see. Sure, sure. Thank you. Um, we're not, this is going to be city water and city sewer, as is Lakewood, so we're not into shallow wells. I know it's apples and oranges to a degree. But as I say, we're, I feel like we're up against the same issue with remote and that zoning. That is all.
Well, if, if I could just move to one second, the only area that would be the closest and you don't have it up anymore, but that southwest corner over through here, which is really the closest to that, it looks like it's going to be a detention facility. So that's going to be open space as you get close to that. And then on the south end here, this property, the residential, this is starting to south of the next property, south. So this really doesn't abut anything but that one residence, which were the owners who sold the property to them.
So just south of, of this parcel, the buildings that are here, what, what are those called today? Big old question. Yeah, one more for the advocates. So as so, so the business, the 25,000 square, they'll be, which are 49.
Yep.
And it's just for sure, in and outs, storage.
Yep.
You guys aren't building anything, mixing anything.
No, we're not mixing.
Right, it's just, it's, it's, it's. So we have, just for everyone's verification here, tonight we have a meeting on the 27th of August, proxy number four hours, for a zoning, planning and zoning commission meeting. Uh, and we have an M2 zoning that was being proposed and we had about 60 or so property owners come out and talk and object to the project, so it's still kind of fresh on everyone's memory. But, uh, to Mr. Rappich's point, it does stay in our zoning, uh, an M2 zoning that actually be remote from, uh, residences. Uh, I think this one's a bit different from what we dealt with. That's my opinion.
I agree with Commissioner Neil, this is a little bit different. I do understand Commissioner Rappich is concerned about the M2 zoning, but we talked two weeks ago about huge warehouses, huge facilities with hundreds of trucks. This is one, one construction company. I, I'm sure he doesn't have 100 trucks.
Maybe you do?
No.
And I don't believe this is going to cause anywhere near the noise that the M2 zoning businesses would have caused that we spoke of two weeks ago. There's going to be no noise pollution. I don't see any, any air pollution. I don't see any, any, any water pollution for sure. Uh, the only concern I do have is because there will be eventually, the Oakstead subdivision will be built with $300,000 houses probably. I would like to see some sort of screening, some, something to separate the, the business from, from the residential. And we could, we could save that resolution for, for, for a different meeting, but that's my opinion.
I can see potentially problematic is just a entrance out and off of Big Timber. Just with, with some of the stuff that we went through before with the school over there and the traffic. I get that there's only eight to 10 trucks, but that's eight to 10 semi-type trucks that are going through and that school is going through. And also utilizing that as a, a easement or a common, common entrance exit for that home there too. That's just a concern that, that I see, not, not necessarily anything to put kibosh on anything, but just something to think about.
Some of the vehicles are like a one-time pickup, you know, with like a trailer behind it, maybe a Skid steer or some of these one-time pickups.
Gotcha.
You know, and they're not all 60, 18 years or six liters or. Or some like trucks or whatever.
We got, we have one semi, two six liters and two cranes. That's our big ones. Everything else is three 50s, four 50s, two 50s. Okay. And we've got a couple four transits. There's the ones, one they just got a little service or something. They drive the middle four cranes. Save on the gas.
I'm going to ask a little overarching question, maybe Mr. Ray can answer, and for the record, this has nothing to do with you folks. This actually is more that same itch from two weeks ago, but it, it does kind of apply best intentions and, and the plan and what we're, what he wants to do with it notwithstanding. Zoning is zoning and there's nothing to say regardless of intent and best of, you know, uh, intentions to be reconvened. It, that's not, there's not, what's binding the current recommendation or the current plan to future zoning? Do you see what I'm asking?
Well, I, I believe looking at, so the difference, I believe from this week compared to two weeks ago is that we didn't know who the end user was going to be. We were going to zone it and the lights, in my opinion, right? I'm not speaking for the lights, but in my opinion, they were going to sell the land to a developer.
They agree.
Development. So we had no idea of what was going to actually go in there. In this instance, we know, we have the petitioner here, we see the footprint of a $25,000 or 21,000 square foot building with party stalls, which is obviously just a rental novel. We have an idea of what it's going to be. Uh, with Mr. Ray saying that the Oakstead houses are going to be on the other side of the school. There is one current parcel to the south, which is, it looks like a barn and the home is actually further to the south and then the, the one home that's kind of locked into this property that, that wasn't sold. I mean, you kind of got to move, move with the flow there. I mean, at some point we have to think about what is remote. You know, I mean, how, how far remotely, remote, the fact that there is different zoning in the front of this property that would allow some office space uh, to block it, I think at this intersection, which I don't want it to go unset tonight, but this is a very important intersection for the village, right? This is around 20 and Big Timber Road. But I think the way that this, these parcels have been subdivided with their differentiation against anything that's going to be abutting, uh, Big Timber uh, as well as some sections of Route 20, and, I mean, for me, this is remote enough. But I, I definitely hear what you're saying.
I agree with everything you just said. Let's say it's my property. I get hit by a bus tomorrow. My kids sell it and it's already zoned M2. What binds the land to, or that zoning to the plan as we're adhering it tonight?
You, I may?
Yep.
Madam, I, I mean, the attorney, it was a question I have. This also is going to have an annexation agreement. It's good for 20 years usually. I mean, you can, your, your board can choose to be less than 20, but it can't be more than 20 over the state statute. That gives you a whole bunch of control and legal that you don't have on a straight zone. So you can talk about what, you know, or, you know, you can make those recommendations, what you want to see here. So yes, if he does get hit by one of those.
Sure, the immediate ones.
They didn't want, they're painful, but, uh, no, that, that's one of the best things about annexations is that you have a way to reach out and control things with a little more finesse than you have with straight zone. And so that's what we expect.
Okay.
Is that, you know, you're going to have an annexation agreement. It's going to talk about the things that you have for conditions here. It's going to talk about what the town's long-term plans are for this area. Um, you know, one of the reasons this is designed, of course, this is so far back for instance, was you're correct when you said this is going to be an important corner for your town. Um, this, this corner is going to be a commercial corner someday. I can't tell you what, they, what, what businesses are going to be there. I'd be pretty surprised to find that you didn't see businesses at this intersection. Now, I don't know anybody would actually want to live on this intersection, even today's traffic. You know, it's, it's, it's just too much traffic.
So the short answer is a future site plan approval meeting is, is it what's going to hold them to it? Okay, okay.
It's going to be incorporated as part of the United States, you're going to look at what we want to do.
Understood. I'm not accusing anybody of an attempted bait switch or hell game or anything like that, but it's.
It's still very wrong. It's still very wrong.
There were 200 people there and 60 of them talked for three hours.
You know, and also looking at this property commissioner, but it's, it's the, the one, the property that is zoned or is being proposed to be zoned into is 3.23 acres. And I don't want to, I don't want to mark my words and say what's the worst that can happen in 2.2 acres. But again, this is different from 38 acres and 100 acres. So the footprint is small. My last comment, we would, we can move on. It would be my opinion to move forward as is. I don't want to put any conditions on the petitioner viscerally in the process. But I would say, maybe think about when we're doing the engineering, if we can put up some screening along the south side of the park. I don't want to put any conditions on this. I want you guys to be able to move forward unimpeded. Uh, but as you guys begin to kind of design and build out this property, if we could think about some screening on the south side, I think that'll, that would be good. You haven't done a place, all the trees you cut out.
I, I heard that they kept those trees just to keep the taxes down.
Does it really?
Because they were, they were the perfect line to, uh, like a nurse tree nursery. There was a lot of barn torn and a lot of weeds. I'm trying to salvage as many as I could, what was that we can use.
This, this, this commission is a history of being tree-friendly. If, if you, if you plant trees, you'll need the ladder and I just. I'm going to just.
Yes, sir.
So reducing motion in seconds still stands?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Rappich?
Aye.
Mr. Rosetti?
Aye.
Mr. Neil?
Aye.
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, our next agenda item. Give, give me homework, motion to authorize the chair to report the actions of this evening's committee. By means of fact and recommendations to the village board. Wait a second?
Yes.
Mr. McBride?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Mr. Rappich?
Aye.
Mr. Rosetti?
Aye.
What were coming, first sign up?
I believe there are a few. Well, you can just give your names, sir, for that, for the record.
Department of Oxley, I live over here about one block. And then here's some 69. They did a water survey back before Crown Community Development. You got their approval to annex this property on here. I'm concerned, I think a survey should be done on the water situation. You had a geologist here give a very detailed report. And if he's been reading the paper, then the paper reader, I'm old fashioned. Huntley's running out of water. In 25 years, they've already done studies, they're running out of water. They're going to have to run a pipeline off of the states to Huntley. I sure don't want to have to deal with a situation like that. And, uh, so I don't want to prolong the meeting. That's just how I feel about it. I, I feel, I feel sorry for those people out there because they're going through some changes. How many people live out in that area? Anybody here to live out in that area?
Which you're talking about the Oakstead community or the laws of LA?
I'm talking about the one out by the 90 and, uh, Higgin, Higgins Road out there. I can understand why the people are upset with you. I wouldn't like to get trampled on if I live, if I paid taxes out there 25 years and lived out there. I think they got a voice to say. So I'll let the other gentleman talk, but thanks for your time.
Did you?
It's a thankless job.
I forgot to sign.
I need some, may I talk?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I need some guidance, assistance or something. Um, the property known as, um, Shireland, it's okay. I have been trying to get assistance in this falling on deaf ears. Uh, there's a business there, which I brought up at the last meeting. Safety-wise, our department doesn't even notice a business there. Um, there is no business on the books, but yet there's business happening, going on and on. I need a place cleaned up. I'm going to make it my job to clean up that area. Uh, on Dietrich Road and Route 20, it's getting worse. Uh, you know, we don't need it to turn into, um, a course section. So I've talked to the taxing body. Uh, they have no knowledge. I brought it up to their attention. It's been there since 2018.
You spoke with Kane County on that one?
No, I spoke with our taxing body, which would be, um, the township. Okay, two hours I was in there off, brought up, they did aerial stuff and everything. They didn't even know, they seen two barns based on their pictures. What can we do? Where do you want me to go next? You want me to go to county and sit at their meetings and say, I need it cleaned up? I've talked to Stan. Stan said it's not his responsibility. Um, what would you like me to do? Or what could you do or make a phone call or the town of, or the village of Hampshire is not responsible for any of that property. It's us. It's, it's on the zoning, um, and the unincorporated township. So where, where do you think I should go next? Mr. Ray?
Yeah, I'd just like to clarify, the planning and zoning commission is, is an entity of the village, so it doesn't have any other, um, uh, code enforcement jurisdiction, uh, onto any property outside the village. I mean, it, it puts together a comprehensive plan that reaches across, but we don't, we have no authority over that property, as you said. So the only place that you can get code enforcement authority like that right now until they annex is through Kane County.
So unincorporated Hampshire.
Right.
Kane County, this board has no say-so or input right now on that property. Is that correct?
Other than the comprehensive plan.
Well, no, I, I, I'm referring to, forget two weeks ago, I'm referring to what it looks like now and what's happening.
Correct, no, the village has no jurisdiction.
And my next visit will be this week to, um, Kane County.
Give you their phone number if you'd like.
Sure, well, thank you for your time.
You're welcome.
The only, the only other thing you.
The only, the only other thing you could do if you wanted to, um, is if there are any complaints where it comes to life safety hazard or anything of that nature, you can put those complaints into Hampshire Fire Protection District because they are responsible code-wise for that area. So that is, that, that is something that you can do as well.
And they're not aware of it as a scheme. So I will establish that this week. I'll let them know. Thank, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Hi, I'm Mark Walter. Um, I just had a couple of questions about this, what happened here just recently. Um, one, two, three, four, there was probably seven representation people representing this property owner. Um, can I get their names and who they were? Who they represented?
Staff can certainly provide that.
Yeah, who would I, who would I go to get that?
I'll give you my card.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I'd like to know who they are and what they represent. It seems like an awful lot of representation, maybe it's normal for, 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 for a two acre small concrete company to come in with an entourage and request M two. And yeah, I do also share your concerns about once you zone it on two, then let's guarantee it with those M two. So, okay.
The petitioner's information is actually in, uh, public, publicly available agenda items on the village website.
Okay.
Tonight's meeting, the planning and zoning commission.
Okay, great. Great, yeah. And can I use as a backup, can I?
I'll, I'll get you my card.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Dick?
Oh.
I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Say.
Mr. Neal? Mr. Rappich?
Aye.
Mr. Rosetti?
Aye.
Mr. McRide?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.